I'm on, but I can't hear you. And my volume is all the way up.
I ask that you comfort the more than twenty thousand Canadians who have been displaced by the fires. Our country is divided and many have forgotten civility and kindness. We ask that you give them grace. I ask for your protection of the men and women of the military and our first responders across this great country. We pray in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty, and the citizens for home.
Well, first of all, I would like to introduce Christine Wade, who is our new deputy clerk and FOIA officer. So, welcome. Throw you right in the fire tonight. I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda for tonight's meeting to add, under new business, a closed session authorized by Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one eight three for discussion and consideration of the possible acquisition of real property for a public purpose. Bob and Mr. Diegack, do we have any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the town council meeting of June twelfth, twenty twenty-three as presented. Oh, you got it quick, Mr. Diegack. Miss Wall. Are there any amendments? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. First action item, consideration is revised, excuse me, revision to the Town Employee Handbook. There are three new policies proposed. Mr. Mathers, can we get a staff report on that, please, sir?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Well, first of all, you know, let me say that, you know, human resources policies, personnel policies should always be subject to review and modification as necessary. We live in a, you know, constantly changing world that requires adjustments to our policies from time to time, and these particular policies, I think, are needed. And the bereavement policy is certainly one that we need to have in place. I was actually surprised that we didn't have one. What we have provided for your review, and incidentally, all these policies have been reviewed and approved by the Personnel Committee. But it's pretty straightforward, not over generous, but does provide for some opportunity for our employees to engage in bereavement activities. You've got a loss of a loved one. The telework policy is one that will not be widely applied with the town of Dayton because it's a very small workforce, as you know. But at the same time, you know, I do think that in today's world, many people appreciate the opportunity to do work from home from time to time. And also because we do live in a digital world, it's relatively easy to monitor productivity and all those kinds of things when somebody is teleworking. There can also be special instances when somebody needs to do telework for just on a particular assignment, like writing a grant or something of that nature where it's good sometimes to sequester yourself and avoid the distractions that we always have in the office, especially Krista. And then finally, the inclement weather policy is one that I felt was necessary just for equity purposes because some of our, well, our policies in general for inclement weather are very favorable and certainly generous to the employees because in those rare, increasingly rare instances where the weather is so poor that we have to close the office, everyone is still compensated for their time. However, two groups of employees, namely law enforcement and public works, need to come in and perform various duties regardless of the weather. And in the case of the public works employees, we receive stipends from through the state of Virginia annually to cover the cost of the public works employees' efforts. And certainly, I don't think anyone would question the need to have law enforcement regardless of the weather. So, so I think these policies are very sound and should be adopted.
Ms. Mathias, can you hear us?
Yes.
And is that the recommendation from the Personnel Committee?
It is. We went over them in depth and everything that I've heard so far is exactly what we discussed, and I completely agree.
Thank you, ma'am. I need a motion to adopt the revisions to the Town Employee Handbook as presented. Ms. Estes?
Second.
You're too late. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next up is a slew of appointments. So I'm going to read all the appointments, and then I'm going to ask, we'll do the vote at the end instead of doing for each one. So appoint Christine Wade as the town's deputy clerk. Appoint Chris. Appoint Christine Wade as the town's FOIA officer. Appoint Maggie Roche as the town zoning administrator. Appoint Maggie Roche as the town's subdivision agent. Appoint Maggie Roche as a member of the Harrisonburg-Rockingham Metropolitan Planning Organization, Technical Advisory Committee, and alternate member to the HR MPO Board. Now, I entertain a motion to accept all of these appointments. Thank you, Mr. Diegack. Ms. Estes, second. All in favor? Motion passes. Next action item is adoption of the Rockingham County Emergency Operations Plan. Can we get a staff report on that, Mr. Mathers? I can do that report if you like.
Okay, or I would defer to the chief.
That's fine.
And one of the things that we saw that was lacking since planning for things such as back in two thousand seventeen when we had the storm and the town flooded, hurricane events, earthquakes, anything like that, there should be a plan in place at the town to respond to these incidents. So when I did some research, Rockingham County has an emergency operations plan already completed. It's hundreds of pages. So instead of rewriting and reinventing the wheel, I called over there, spoke to the fire chief. The towns are included in Rockingham County's EOP. So I printed a copy, forwarded on to Mr. Mathers. So, and I told him we would probably have to have it adopted by council to accept their plan as is. So.
Okay, it's light, enjoyable reading if anybody would like to read it on.
It's long.
Thanks, chief. So I need a motion to adopt the Rockingham County Emergency Operations Plan as presented. Mr. Seward? A second? Any discussion?
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything we have to do for that would be specific for a?
No, it's just, so basically, it's just a guideline on response. So if it was something that just affected the town only, obviously, the police department, myself, and the town manager would discuss what was going on and what I would suggest as a fix or to resolve the issue, and we would discuss it together, implement whatever actions need to be taking place. If it's a countywide incident where, let's say, the whole state of Virginia during a hurricane, like everywhere loses power, and instead the governor declares a state of emergency for whatever reason, we would fall under Rockingham County's, and I would work with Rockingham County to bring in personnel here if we needed it to assist them in other areas that were affected more than we were. So.
Good question. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes. We're now at that time in the, nobody signed up? All right, so we will move on to reports, and we'll start with Mr. Mathers for your staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, not to belabor this, and certainly Christine was already mentioned, but it is really gratifying to have several new employees. I think we're fully staffed at this point, and, you know, the new roles that existing employees have assumed as well, I just feel very positively about the nature of things staffing-wise in the town of Dayton at this time. So May Lawrence has joined us, Christine Wade, of course, and Jeremy Hevner, our new police officers. They all started last week. So great to have everybody aboard. I'm not going to talk about too many things in my report, but I do want to mention the Silver Lake Nature Trail project, which is proceeding pretty well. You know, it's like so many things. I thought that it would be completed two weeks ago, but we're still plugging away. And, you know, that's not to say that there are any snags. In fact, we met again with the surveyor and with the city of Harrisonburg today. No obstacles there whatsoever. We will soon be delineating the exact points along the trail, and I think it's going to be very good. In addition to that, VDOT is going to be widening that road, and so this could create an opportunity to perhaps enhance the project a little bit. So that's encouraging, and I think we really will be done before long on this. And then lastly, I want to mention a special use permit that has come to our attention just recently, rodentizer for the property at three twenty-two North or John Whalen Highway. This is for business purposes. It's the staff's recommendation that we set this up for a joint public hearing to coincide with the next council meeting or to meet at five thirty on August fourteenth prior to the next regular council meeting, along with the Planning Commission. So to move forward with this, we just need council's consensus.
Anyone opposed to that?
We'll be here.
That concludes my comments. Thank you very much.
Chief Trout for the Police Department report.
All right, Mayor Council, you have my report in front of you. I will highlight just a few things. ARPA grant, the equipment has been ordered for that. Nearly fifty-three thousand dollars of free money from the state. The first new vehicle will be outfitted next week, so we should be able to close out that grid. Cones with a cop happened back in June. Great event, a good turnout, a lot of fun. And then just to give you, a few more things came out in the newsletter, National Night Out, first Tuesday in August from six to eight. And then I'm holding a chief's town hall that went out in the newsletter as well. So the residents will get a postcard for both of those events by next week, I would say. So if you have any other questions, let me know.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Bowman? We appreciate that. Mr. Diegack for economic and communist development.
Development, there you go. Oliver, I know we've got, we're very fortunate to have our guest host here, Maggie Roche here. Again, I'll say congratulations again on the well-deserved promotions, and I know Maggie's got a lot there. So I don't know if there's anything you wanted to mention other than, I know we've got wayfinding signs for contracts war moving forward, downtown revitalization grant has moved forward too, so I know that's.
We do have a couple of vacancies I wanted to mention. There are vacancies on the EDA and the BZA, and the deadline to apply for both of those has been extended to August tenth. So we welcome any applications. Oh, and I would also like to welcome our newest business to town, Prissy Country Girl opened this past weekend. Two, two, one, Main Street.
I also understand we have an event this weekend. I'm giving you plugs here.
Do have a summer concert series this Saturday, July fifteenth. It is with Kelly Mae Brown and Crystal Arm and Trout.
We warmed them up for you over Mass Nutton on Saturday, so they're ready. They're ready for date. And then also thanks again, Maggie, for the Business Spotlight Series has been great. So that's been well, well-received, and it seems like it's getting a lot of traction. So it's fantastic. So we had Hipps, John Hipps Financial, Parkview Credit Union, and then coming up, Breathway Studios, correct? All right. So well done, and thanks to Downtown Merchants for the Americana Small Town Celebration this past weekend. So. That's all I got there for, for community and economic development, unless Mrs. Roche has anything. Finance, there you go. First of all, happy fiscal New Year to everyone, and especially too. I hope everyone celebrated in style. I know Ms. Hall certainly did, but.
She gets to finish the audit, and then we start over.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, you celebrated fiscal New Year's Eve with the auditors coming in, correct? So thank you very much for getting, yeah, closing one out and starting a new one, and thank you very much to our very capable treasurer here. And thank you to Mr. Mathers for our finance committee meeting on Thursday, which went over, you know, closing out the budget. You see, Ms. Hall provided the preliminary closeout for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. I'll just highlight and feel free to add Ms. Hall, but I, great news there, under budget. So that's great, definitely in the black, and preliminary numbers look like we're carrying over about one point nine million abruptly. I will find out, you know, so again, that'll carry over to capital projects and from water and sewer funds primarily. But I do want to make that clear, you know, again, we're hitting our financial goals, still funding our reserve targets. Finance and investments are looking great, so we're well positioned to fund both our operations, but also move forward with all the capital projects we've got coming up. So I think that's always good to know, and I think we're in good shape. So thank you for that. So that's, I think that hit the highlights there for Thursday.
It took a lot longer during that meeting. Mr. Seward for infrastructure and police, please.
Infrastructure, very easy. We did not meet. And police, just as easy, we did not meet. But I will put a plug in for the chief and the officers for the amount of work they put in for this accreditation. It's so long, so we've been doing a good job.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Wallace for parks.
Yes, well, as everyone is probably aware, you know, there certainly are some concerns associated with the mudler in terms of the level of effort required to do the event and also the quality of the the equipment that we use, which needs to be upgraded. So everyone else, everyone is also aware of the fact that it was postponed this year till April. And so we are endeavoring to get a good grip on how this can be done in a perhaps a more efficient way and in one that is not quite as taxing for the employees. And we've also, I think, added this to a survey that we're currently conducting. And so we're going to get some feedback from the public on, you know, the nature of this and the other events and what, you know, citizen preferences are in this regard. So we're, what's the best term? Reshaping or reinvigorating, I'm not sure, but we're taking a look at at all of our events and trying to make sure that they're accomplished in a way that is most beneficial to the community. Did I get it all?
There is some other exciting news coming down the pike about parks. Purple. It's Sunset Parks. We should just change it to Purple Park because everybody calls it Purple Park. When we, when we get new signs. Now that, so we should be looking at about three months for delivering installation of those. So, you know, we wanted to wait till this is, because it's in this year, CIP, so we want to get it going as soon as we could. But it's going to be about three months before we see those onsite. So I'm sure the kids will love it. Ms. Mathias, can you hear us?
Yes.
Do you have a personnel report?
Basically, the last meeting we had was this past Thursday, July sixth, and we really went in depth on those policies. So I think we covered everything approving the policies for now. And also the new hires. So I think everything's been covered.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other council members have comments?
Okay. Well, I think we probably have through websites or brochures or something. We can furnish that easily.
That's, that's why we, see better, we hit the grand.
Any other council comments? We have no unfinished business and the only new business is to go into closed session. So we'll now close the open session tonight. We'll go into closed session. It should not be a long closed session, but because we have Ms. Matthias, who is on Zoom, we'll ask everybody that's not going to be involved in a closed session to step out. And then once we finish that closed session, you can come back in.
I'll go ahead and move that the town council enter into a closed session as authorized by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 for the discussion and consideration of the possible acquisition of real property for public purpose where discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the town. Subject matter of the closed session is possible acquisition of land for a water tank.
Thanks, sir. So, thank you.
And thank you, Mrs. Brown, for making that sound official.
It won't be long.
Yeah.
At this point, we are almost in closed session. Close the door, please, Sam. Thanks, sir.
And then we also have Zoom people too.
We're working towards that right now.
Okay.
With respect to just included closed session, as best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and as Freedom of Information Act and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the council. So I have a roll call, please.
Ms. Estes? Mr. Seward?
Aye.
Mr. Walls?
Aye.
Ms. Matthias?
Aye.
Mr. Dieg?
Aye.
Mayor Jackson?
Aye. All right. Need a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting? All in favor? Speed adjourn?
All right. Six, okay, who had 6:45? Fifty-two. Yeah, you adjusted. Yeah. What did Maggie have?